Really, it's like, well, I see the killing doesn't really matter.
Oh, you're dealing with one that's definitely really red.
Oh, that's a lot, I think.
Maybe the same.
No, it is. Very nice, bitter powder.
Just very expensive.
Hey, right.
Hi, Lisa, can you hear us?
Yep, you're all set.
Okay, great. Uh, good evening, it is Wednesday, September seventeen, seventeen. Uh, it's six thirty-four P M and I am calling this laws and rules meeting to order. Uh, first on the agenda, this evening we have uh, twenty-one Blue Stone Court utility, street and utility dedication. Um, this is a new project that is going to be a fifteen lot subdivision at twenty-one Blue Stone Court. Um, and the um, S S L I Holdings is asking the common council to begin its review in consideration of adopting the proposed roadway and associated utilities once the division has been fully developed. Uh, so there's a few steps that we will have to take. Um, but there is no one here tonight to speak on it, so we are going to table this.
I also thought, I, Michelle and I thought earlier and um, reached out to John and Ed about getting their input, so I have an email from John spoke with Ed and he concurs with John, so I could send this with some conditions. Okay, um, I also did forward it to court counsel, but they haven't had an opportunity for for to look at it, or hopefully by next month. Okay. All right, Miss, should I, you want me to reach out to them? How about the meeting this month?
Yeah, I don't see how it's coming.
Yes.
Is it on? You want me to do that?
Yeah, fine.
Thank you. Okay.
Nevermind.
Problem with my news, my new like, I'm starting my day with emails, when I come home from work, it's like.
All these. Right.
Okay.
All right, uh, okay, we are going to uh, switch item number two and three. Hi, sorry. So, we're gonna switch some items, so, but uh, the next up is the memorializing resolution opposing the one big beautiful bill, um, which was um, brought forward by some community members, Charlotte Adamus and Barbara Hill, who are here. I don't know if you wanna come up to the table and speak.
Do we sit up here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's funny, it's lovely to see the back here, yeah.
I know, all the fences.
Rushed the back, yeah, today. I mean, my, we do.
Um, yeah, so, how this arose, Barbara Hill here, um, is, we're in a group called Indivisible, but how this, the idea came from Pat Ryan's office. Um, and um, we've been on a few phone calls with the county exec and March Gallagher and Mayor Noble, um, explaining the impacts of the big beautiful bill and how it's going to impact our communities over time. Um, and maybe sooner than later, so, there may be, so, we're very fortunate in this county to have fairly progressive, you know, elected officials. Um, so, pretty much the message is, don't shoot our elect, well, not a good term to use, I'm sorry. Um, do not, can't believe those, it slipped, um. Like, just know that coming up, we may see service cuts and/or raises in property taxes to meet um, services, so, um, this is a bit, uh, it was meant, like, sometimes moralizing resolutions may not have a you know, purpose, this one could be that it's a bit to spread the word about the impacts, um, generally, and um, I think so far, the town New Paltz has passed something, the village of New Paltz, Pearl, town of Hurley, I mean, wasn't really expected, but it's, um, so, there are different people in different towns trying to bring it forward, but.
Right, so the, the resolution, um, actually was formatted originally by, um, Pat Ryan, by Dan Torres.
Right.
And so, we took a look at it, it is visible, and thought, really, yeah, very important information to get out and, and to all of the towns in the city of Kingston, um, it had, as Barbara was saying, so, for the past couple of weeks, we try to distill, um, as much as possible information from officials and from official sources, and we're gonna be using that information, so at the same time that things are happening on the town and city level in terms of the resolution, um, through various venues like Neighbor to Neighbor, which I'm, I'm a part of, um, and, um, the people who helped to put the, um, this work together, the flyer, the barb and I are looking at this, almost ready for prime time, um, we've been working to work in another way as well, in terms of knocking on doors and getting that information out, so, I guess the point is that it's happening on multiple levels. We really want the county to be informed, not just our elected officials, but we want the community to understand that the harms that are coming down are coming down because of the spending gap, that the amount of money that is being taken away will be felt, some now, but most after twenty-twenty-six, which was planned. So, again, I think it's, it's, it's important for Ulster County to stand together on this and say, this is not okay. This is how our community can be and will be harmed, and so, we're hoping that the city of Kingston understands that, and I think it's beneficial to all of us to, um, to let our community know that, that we're not okay with this.
And, um, yeah, I just wanna patch in that, uh, I did speak to Abe JuChitow, who's my legislator, and I did speak with Jen Metzger, they are considering something at the county level, I don't know exactly what they have in mind, and sometimes, you know, messaging may have changed this week, who knows, but, um, um, yes, I just wanna mention that, but, uh, and, of course, I'm not sure if the other towns should know that modified any of, but this is the draft, so it's really, if there's something people want in or out, it's really up to you, it's just, we're bringing it forward as, as, you know, Dan Torres drafted it, it was from, you know, Pat Ryan's office, and, um, and then there were some additions by some people, maybe one person or a group is a vet and, you know, really wanted to get, you know, a veteran soundbite in, so.
Right, and not everything is easy to distill down to Ulster County, for example, like, the number of veterans in Ulster County that receive SNAP. Um, I think March said she didn't have that figure yet, but there are.
Yeah, there are.
You know, when I said, how many mil, one point two million veterans nationwide receive SNAP benefits, so, we have to have a percentage of those in Ulster County who will be hurt, but SNAP benefit.
If any, that, you know, March Gallagher's put out a presentation, um, Jen Metzger, their slides, but it's hard to come, get down to, like, because the state hasn't really decided before, you know, how this is gonna come down in terms of the cuts coming from the state, there's really not that many numbers, we can, hard numbers, we can get that, or, you know, channel the numbers regarding who's unmedicated, you know.
And who receives SNAP and, and what the, what the trickle-down effect is going to be, I mean, that's clear. How, how serious it triggers me, a flood, a trickle, uh, you know, we don't know, but.
And there's, you know, a big thing is the Medicaid work requirement that's catching a lot of people's attention, I mean, one thing is the fact I see that actually two-thirds of people on Medicaid work, so, um, but how is, you know, those agencies that serve those people, how are they gonna manage, so it has, you know, multi-impact? But we could go on and on, I'm sure, but any questions or thoughts or?
Andrew?
Mine are, I mean, there's a couple titles.
Yes.
Um, so, I would like to, because, because our, our name is down on this, and then I, uh, what was that?
No, no, like Medicaid was not cap, there's a few things.
Yeah, this little thing on the second page.
Second page of this, yeah, Kingston is, uh.
There's next to, they're not lined up, and then actually in the last resolve.
What version you got set, when you come?
That's right.
The, the last resolve is also missing comma, but actually, it brings up another point, is and not, not talking about Oxford Commerce, because Charlotte knows how I feel about Oxford Commerce. Um, you do have Oxford Commerce in there, so I, I'm happy for that, I think.
And I'm not responsible for it, but.
But, uh, my thought is, you do have Representative Josh Riley on this list, who doesn't represent the city of Kingston, so I don't know if that is, I mean, I know he's close, and I know there's some connections, but I think it's stronger.
Yeah.
So, I, that's.
I agree.
So, I would make that out, um, and then it fixes the missing comma.
I mean, it was developed for all of Ulster County, so absolutely, like, even in the flyers that were working out for Neighbor to Neighbor, you know, I have for Kingston, our U S Congressman, Pat Ryan, voting no on this. And other, you know, Woodstock is gonna put in Josh Riley, so this way, every town's and or city should. Model.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Carol? So, where are we with the other cities and town, not cities, I'm sorry, the other towns and villages?
It's hard, right, you say our city and the towns and the villages, well, yeah.
Yeah. I know New Paltz, um, passed theirs.
New Paltz passed, oh, they passed.
I don't know, Hurley did pass, that was recent.
Recent, that was last week, and Rosendale is looking good, and we're, you know, we're, we're working with, like, so, an indigenous member in the community, they're presenting it, so, we don't have an invisible person in every community, but in every community that we do, um, we are working with town officials to, to help them.
So, my, my concern for the city of Kingston are, like, the unintended consequences. Um, you know, we have ICE here.
Yeah.
Um, and we, we have probably the largest concentration of people that are at risk, and so, I, I do wonder if an unintentional consequence would be to further target the city of Kingston. Um, so, I would be, I would be more comfortable if other municipalities were to come on board before the city of Kingston, that's my personal. Um, because I think that, that these are, like, really, that, I don't have to tell anybody here, these are really, you know, strange times, and, um, by doing this, are we adding additional, um, pressure?
Thank you, you bring up a really valid point, and I think this is a prime time for everybody right now, things are pretty, pretty terrifying out there in terms of the threats to communities, especially communities that have large numbers of immigrants living here. But I, I do feel really passionate about the fact that silence is exactly what is expected, and that's so, in other words, obeying in advance, keeping alive in advance, lays into, I think, what the federal government is hoping, right, that people will be too afraid to sneak up. So, I, I understand that, but I also think Kingston can be a model, and I think that if we go, and we are not the first, and the county, that others will follow, so I think have a, an opportunity to be a leader and standing up, but I, I.
I think that was the thinking when the, you know, we didn't declare ourselves a sanctuary city, a one B city, and that's been used.
Everything will be used.
Yes, yes.
County also.
I understand that.
I don't think.
See, there's a certain privilege in, um, yeah, I believe, in sort of taking this position that will affect other people that, um, that will bear the brunt, so, that, that might have some.
So, like, right now is just questions, so, let's just keep it at questions, and then we can have that deliberation after, is anybody?
So, I'm, so this is a draft, and, and it sounds to me, you know, I just got it, like, it sounds to me like it needs to be revised. And adjusted.
At least edited, yeah.
At least. So, there's no, I don't, I don't see any pressure to, to act on it tonight. I'd be accepting it and reading it and looking at it, adjusting it if necessary, it's the right thing to do, but I'd be reluctant to pass it unedited.
Can I ask a question, Carol?
Yeah.
Okay, because it's not really discussions, like, question. Is there a number, like, that you would feel comfortable, because it's New Paltz and Hurley, so, we have two.
I think the village, John, the town, so.
Three. Is, you think that, if you have the county, you would feel more comfortable?
If the county came with something, which they're expecting to, and I I don't know when it's gonna happen, but so. Um, because they wanna have their own probably press release and whatever, because Jen is, um, Jen Metzger, this article she did in the Times, uh, Union Record, I think, that she wanted to add some of what she wrote to this draft to bring forward and to do it. Um, because she's very deeply committed to taking a stance, you know, as a county, um, I mean, we're already a target, think the county and the city, so, it's kind of, I hear what you're saying, because, you know, some of us in our group, and I know I've been to the rights trainings, and we've been in our individual meetings or something, and somebody goes, well, gotta go, and they run out to the rapid response team, so, yeah, it's happening. Um, you know, whether it's having something like this, you know, a resolution going forward, I don't, you know, it's, I, it's valid what you're saying, so, but, but, any other questions for us, sir?
Okay, so, we're just gonna move to table?
Um, I would agree.
You would just go?
Yeah.
Okay.
You would?
Because I think, actually, I think, yes.
No, disagree.
I think that, uh, A, we're already on the list, we've seen, uh, the state, uh, the uh, the immigration post, um, that's federal government, they put us on the list of, of cities that are, you know, we're, I mean, that actually care about people, and, um, I think that we, this bill passed fairly recently, I think waiting another month would be, um, letting it go too far. So, I, I know that there might be some little things to change, I would like to change one thing, for example, but I would say, I, I would like to follow the plan of, uh, voting on it tonight, hopefully passing it, and then anybody wants to make changes, we can do that at caucus, we can make changes to a caucus. I think particularly because it's a moralizing resolution, it doesn't have the same kind of weight as a piece of, uh, as a, as a law, an ordinance.
Andrew?
I'd be happy to at least do the, the editing, and then I, I'll send it to everybody before caucus, I mean, I, I'm not gonna change any of the substance, but I could do the editing.
All right, I'll send you the file.
Okay.
So, I will take a chance and make a motion to be about this, uh, memorialized resolution.
So, um, so, resolution opposing the harmful impacts of the big beautiful bill, I have a motion by Renee Scott Childress, do I have a second? I'll second, thank you. Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, so the thing I appreciate changing or discussing is in item number three, um, where it says, it only mentions the middle class, and, um, particularly because it's in relationship to taxes, there's two things there, I think, uh, I'd like to see it say something more like middle and low income tax reduction, uh, and I like to change the word reduction to reduction.
Well, I'm sorry, where is this?
Oh, it's other side of the result.
Third, 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 what?
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, and, uh, because tax relief has been a right-wing way of talking about taxes as if they're a burden, and I don't believe that taxes are a burden, I believe that taxes are essential for functioning of our government, it's these things that pay for the way that we care for one another, it's these things that allow us to actually be a good community, it's a way that we demonstrate our membership in the community, and it's a way that we support one another, both materially and as well as, uh, symbolically. And so, uh, our taxes is one of the things that actually holds us together as a nation, and if we treat that as if it were a burden to us, we're also treating the idea of caring for one another as a burden, so I would like to see it just be tax reduction, I think that then fits well with the idea of the, of requiring the ultra wealthy to pay a greater share of their income in taxes.
Thank you, Renee, I thought you were gonna mention that.
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Is everybody comfortable with Renee's suggestion changes, so that I have, I could just, I'll edit that in, we don't have to it'll be that moving on to that.
We're still in discussion?
Yes.
Sure. Um, so, again, I, I am questioning, I, I, I do understand philosophically how it makes sense to, um, to have this, you know, pass sooner than later, um, but I think we need to think hard and fast um, before, yeah, I said we, we will go to caucus and all of that, but this is, this is really important in terms of this, the, the impact, and I think it exacerbates and further targets the city and its, um, and the community members that we are looking to protect. Um, it's one thing to, you know, sort of, you know, have these wonderful words and these wonderful intents, but how does it affect people, like, for real? I represent it, you know, you know, in my community, um, every weekend, this, this stuff is going on, and, and when your rapid response team is sent out and sent to my community, um, and, and my neighbors are affected, and, and I know that many of us here have neighbors similarly situated, um, I do not mean to say that I am against this, but I'm saying that in, you know, Kingston doesn't have to be, the city of Kingston doesn't have to always be the first, um, I think that's my position.
Appreciate that, appreciate that. Thank you.
I recognize that concern, I do, um, and, uh, I understand that we don't want to, uh, do things that are willy-nilly, um, however, I think we're in a situation where the time for, um, of taking step back, I think, I think is lost, I think it's lost, um, especially given recent events, we've seen that the current federal government is ready to use anything that in its power to try to quash free speech, to try to limit the possibilities of people, uh, try to limit the ways that we care for one another, and, uh, I think this is. And I think this is a time for courage. And I think that I would, I'm remembering too, the famous homily from the priest about the Germanos. So when they came for the Jews, I didn't say anything. When they came for the Gypsies, I didn't say anything. When they came for the political outsiders, I didn't say anything. When they came for me, there was nobody to say.
Exactly.
Right. And so while I, I, I'm concerned, very much concerned about the people in our community and the way that we have been treated by the federal government, I think we're already there. I just really don't think that there's, I don't think that taking an action like this is going to put us in any more jeopardy than we're already in.
May I just?
I'm done.
I haven't said anything, so I just like. So I'm, I'm very grateful. I work in a Medicaid funded program with Medicaid funded clients. Many of them are very scared right now about losing their supports, their health insurance, their, the idea of our hospital being very negatively affected. I feel very comfortable. I don't, I don't feel like it calls out anything about community members specifically. But so I, I'm just saying what I feel. And so I'm good with moving forward on this and.
Okay, I also, you know, yes, this is a time for courage. This is also the time that you can say, so, you know, you were free to write an op ed. You were free to express your, your beliefs in other, in other ways and in other venues. To do this on behalf of the city of Kingston, again, it, it, it puts a laser focus. I mean, the bill has already passed. So what are we really accomplishing? Do we think that by some passing this memorializing resolution that we will, aside from saying we're against it, what, what do you think will happen? Do you think that the, the government, federal government will sort of see, see the light and say, you know, well, maybe we did a bad thing? I just don't know what, what we would look to change with this other than to, it's not even like taking a stand. It's simply saying that we, we understand that these are the possible, that these are the probable effects. But, but, and that's stating the obvious. But aside from that, what it does is again, the unintended consequence of, I, I, you know, I hate to say like poking the bear, but it's again, it's just adding, adding us as, it's, it's just making us that large, that much larger a target.
So do you want to go first?
No, I was just gonna ask a question in terms of what is, what was, when this resolution was developed, what was the overall goal? Since it is already, just to make a statement simply.
Make a statement, but also it's educational for the community. So if a different town, like they go through a discussion process, maybe it was in, you know, in their board meeting, it's a way, word gets out that, yeah, these impacts are gonna be local, they're gonna be right here. It's not, you know.
It's not an assumption.
That's the intention, you must almost do the education about, hey, this stuff is gonna happen because of the bill, you know.
And I thought we should get out of the front, so then it's time for the city to pass his budget, 2026. And you're gonna make some pretty serious cuts and things are gonna happen to be happening starting in 2026. The hope is that our community and really thinking all of Ulster County will be well aware that the, that the gap in funding comes directly from the federal government. That it's not, you know, the common council and Steve Noble deciding to cut services. It is coming straight from the top and to the state. And a lot of people don't understand that right now. So as Mark said, it is educational. It's really saying, we know it's what, what can happen, what most likely will happen. Because where's the money gonna come from with millions of dollars that are being cut? It is, it is undeniable that really bad things are gonna happen in our community. But so many people don't know this. They don't like, yeah. It's very abstract to them, right? They hear millions of dollars, but what will that mean in, in their own community? So it's not just the, the towns and the city passing the resolution and the county, but it's also the work, you know, that people in neighbor to neighbor and indivisible are doing, which is to get out the details, right? So you have a resolution, but it's our job then to go out on the street. And when we door knock for the election in, in October, September, October, we are gonna be handing out these flyers just saying, did you know? 1.3, you know, I mean, is it, I'm terrible with my numbers, my husband said 30%. More than 30% Ulster County residents received Medicaid. It's about, it could be, the person we're knocking on the door may not know yet. They may not know that the SNAP benefits are going to be cut. And there's nothing that we're gonna be able to do about that at the local level. Unless the state jumps in.
Well, the council did a lot, some city money to SNAP, knowing.
Yeah, but it's not gonna last, all right.
You know?
And no, nobody's gonna change their mind in the federal government. It's not about that. It's about our community being better educated and knowing. And so the hope is when we get to the next election cycle, that we continue to support this government, right, our local government, our county government.
Not just say, hey, you're passing this and then see you later. You know, it's like, it's a
It's about support for, for the more standing up.
And an educational part. So like, Abe, when I spoke to Abe Yuchetow, he was like, well, I'm not a fan of memorializing resolutions. And I think another legislator said, oh, we should wait till there's an actual cut and then we do PR about it. But then it's like down the road, you know, all of a sudden there's this thing that gets cut and the county has to hire three additional workers to throw people off of Medicaid and SNAP, right? Because that's gonna have to happen. So it's, it's getting the word out now that these things are gonna come. And then he said, well, I'm not a fan of them, but he was gonna talk to Jen. We'll see what they come up with. But you had your hand up, and I'm not the chair, so.
Yeah, so I wanted to address a little bit actually about memorializing resolutions. And I was going to start with, I'm actually not a fan of memorializing resolutions. I mean, I have sponsored them. I support this. I support almost all the ones that the helm has passed because it's for something I stand for. But I am a doer by nature and I don't think memorializing resolutions do enough for my personality, for me to feel comfortable. That's why I don't like, I'd rather give me something to do. Because you're right, but, you know, especially going to federal government. I do know, working with people who work for the state, they actually do pay attention. So there is more impact, I think, that, you know, at state level than necessarily at the federal level. But, you know, if they listen at the state, they may listen. If, you know, obviously we know where Pat Ryan stands with this. I'm just looking at the list. But, you know, we're not persuading any of them, but it's more about taking a stance and having the community know that you're supporting them. I mean, it's like, because we could go back to the ceasefire when it was a revolution.
Yeah.
It did not stop anything else. But it was a stance that we all felt was important. So this, you know, opposing this and having people understand that we're behind them with whatever happens. You know, that, that is where I'm like, that's why, that's why I'm a voting member of the council. But that's why I support memorializing resolutions, even though I don't like them. So I don't like the concept of them, but I support them because I do think it's important for our community to know we have it back.
But it will be good. I mean, in, in other words, this, this, will this do more harm than good?
Well, I don't think so. I, I mean, obviously, nobody knows, but like Renee said, it's just out there. I don't think it's going to illuminate anything any further than is already illuminated. And this could potentially help support an even larger percentage of Kingston, who, like Michelle said, have concerns about losing their Medicaid or have concerns about losing their SNAP benefits. So, you know, I don't think it's going to, I think it's going to help more than it would hurt.
Symbolic action is still action, so I'm gonna disagree. It's still action. The reason it is action is because you are taking stand, letting other people know where you are with something. And it's a form of mutual aid. It's a form of saying, we are in agreement with you. It's a form of community connection. And I would also point to a bureau going through right now is a new McCarthy period where the federal government is looking for ways to try to limit free speech, prevent people from speaking, forcing them out of their jobs for very small things. And if you remember during the army McCarthy hearings, McCarthy was taken down to a large extent by lawyer made symbolic statement. Because McCarthy went too far against a young man, I was accusing him of things that were just not fair. The lawyer said, at long last, have you no sense of decency, Senator McCarthy? Have you left no sense of decency? And I think that's where we are right now. We are in a position where we have to call on people to have a sense of decency and humanity, but they are sorely lacking right now. And if we don't do it, who will?
It is precisely because they, they have no sense of decency that we need to protect the people that are most at risk. It is, it is by, it's sort of poking the bear, as it were, that, you know, perhaps you don't have to pay the price for it, or you don't, or I don't. But there are people that are further exposed because this will be viewed as poking the bear. I mean, we, we've, you know, and I hate to sound like we need to, you know, to back up, but I'm more interested in the protection of our community than I am at making, you know, eloquent statements on behalf of folks. There, there were real consequences that are going on today and I just cannot feel, I, I don't think it accomplishes anything. I think that if you're trying to educate people, a memorializing resolution is not the way to do that. That if you're not paying attention to what's going on currently and it's in your face, it's on the news, it's everywhere, every day. It's in your community, that memorializing resolution isn't going to give you the education that you need. I support what, what your organizations are doing. And I think at this point, we need to be knocking on doors, we need to be organizing, we need to be part of the, the squad and the rapid response and, 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 yes, and all of that. But, but to do this now, the city of Kingston, I feel that the timing is, is wrong. I think we are exposed.
And I hear that, that we will never, it will never get better. I mean, this is a problem right now. Every day it gets worse. I'm sure I'm on a limb, believe this. And I am vulnerable in other ways. I mean, you're now talking about taking down all the liberal organizations.
Yeah, we're
Right. I have my, all of them in the paper, on Facebook, in whatever. And I made a decision that, and that's a personal decision.
Exactly.
That, that I'm, that I'm good with that. I'm good with that. I'm going to go forward in the way that I have to do it because I, I'm the daughter of a Holocaust refugee. And I think about, I've been thinking about this for years. What if nobody, everyone said, put your head down? We don't wanna, we don't wanna speak up because it's gonna poke the bear, Hitler. Gonna poke the bear, we gotta keep our head down. How many more millions would have died had people not spoken up, had not taken a stand, had not fought back? And I think about that all the time. And yes, there are people that are getting hurt, that will get hurt. There's no, we're, we're, the game's open. It's open. It's too late. We, we can't go back. And this is horrible.
Yes. Yeah. So I, I appreciate everyone's, everything that everyone has to say and bring forward. So I'm just gonna call for a vote now. This still has to go to the rest of the council. We're gonna discuss it at committee. I mean, at caucus, sorry. And, you know, I'm sure we'll hear from community members. And so I'm going to move forward and just thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all the work that you do out there in the community. I just wanted like.
It's okay.
Yes, exactly. All right, so I'm just gonna read the resolution of the video report again. It's a resolution opposing the harmful impacts of the big, beautiful bill to be edited and renewed at caucus on October 6, 2025. We have a motion by Renee Scott Childers, the second by Sarah Pasty. We've had vigorous discussion and so I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Paulus? Thank you.
And we're gonna be looking at an edited version.
Unfold, edit it.
And then
And also the full council too, so that they know to, to be prepared.
All right, so we're moving on to another memorializing resolution that I was trying to get, say, go last month, but it didn't happen. The level difference. Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
Is that okay?
So sorry. Yeah, so since there's nobody gonna speak on this. Yeah, so I had let Lorraine, Breya and Gil Rice. This is regarding the burn ban and so they had a presentation.
Alyssa, can you make Eli a co-host to make sure a screen, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. We cut to the table. Renee, how do you see from at least the passing of middle and vote in the conference and then changing the leaves to reduction, right, with two changes?
Yes. I'm also, it's so cold in front of everybody, so it's great.
It's already in quotes, right?
I know, but I still
Maybe I'll spell beautiful on it.
All right, so this is something President Shaw actually had first sent in. It was a stability of a burn ban resolution.
Yes, this was brought for constituents. And they presented a couple, or come to speak a couple of times, but now they have, after hearing some of our concerns, they have more information for us. So I appreciate that and that was my introduction, so. Do you think it's simple?
That's great. I'm a professor of art college. I also live in Kingston. I've lived in Kingston since 2014. I was a neighbor of Maryland for a very long time. I am, I'm terrible at saying the whole thing, but I was. Yeah, well, yes. So, so my, I'm here because I'm, because I'm a Kingston resident, but also because I got dragged into, you know, air quality. I'm a water quality guy. Right now I'm covered in all sorts of things from tromping around, trying to deal with the harmful algal bloom that we have. So I'm a, I'm a water quality scientist and I'm gonna tell you right now, as a humble person, I did not understand air quality and the dangers of what we breathe until about six, seven years ago, because I was still with Loma Mark. So what I'm, what I'm gonna be talking to you about today and what Lorraine had asked me to talk about, because I've been working with Lorraine for about six, seven years, is air quality, but as it relates to this idea of fire safety and making sure that Kingston is safe as we're in the midst of this time of change. And my relationship to fire has changed completely in the last seven years. And I'm first to tell you that I had, I have a long time of ban of campfires and all sorts of fires. And I have, it's been a And, um, I have, it's been a while, me trying to figure out how to deal with the fact that we are in a changing time. And so things that we used to do a while ago and things that we have taken for granted here are now not as, um, not as safe. Uh, so anyway, uh, so I'm, um, I'm a professor. I work with a bunch of students who are really excited to try to help us deal with this issue of climate change that we have. Um, and then one of those big things is fire right now, right? And so, uh, when I'm talking about air quality, when talking about trying to bring back these kinds of days, do you remember being able to see our, our mountains like this? Not so long ago, right? So we, we've got some issues that we're gonna need to figure out for the society. Um, but there are some things that in Kingston we can do specifically. Because I talk too much, I wanna make sure I say everything upfront. I need you guys to stop me. I'm a professor, so I may not go too long, but here are the takeaways that I hope that you take from what I'm gonna share with you. The first is that, um, to be very clear, we've almost made it, I think we've made it two hundred forty-eight years since the last time Kingston burnt to the ground. We're two years away from the two hundred fiftieth anniversary of Kingston burning completely to the ground. So one of the things, and I, and I'm not being facetious, one of the things that I'm here to kind of hope that you all will take seriously is that we need to make sure it doesn't happen again, um, and that we can actually make it to the two hundred fiftieth. And, um, the reason why I'm, I'm talking about this is that the ways that we used to make, uh, decisions and ways we're used to and trained to engage with ideas of fire and air quality, um, uh, are outdated. We have to kind of update the way we think about things because climate has changed things, and it is changing. Um, aside from our political, uh, context, that our climate's changing too. So there's a lot of change, and what we thought we used to think was normal, um, is no longer. So, um, and I'm really proud to be a part, be a part of this community because over the last, um, fourteen or, all right, eleven years, and predominantly in the last seven years, I've seen amazing leadership by the city, by the Kingston, um, Conservation Advisory Council, by leaders like Lorraine Trina, um, by Julie Noble. There, there have been, there has been a lot of work done to try to think about how do we address climate in real concrete ways. And one of the biggest things is air quality. So the, um, the city of Kingston put up a, a sensor on the roof of the Annie Murphy Building, um, and we started figuring it out, how to do that in twenty nineteen. It was specifically at the request of the city. You all. Um, and it was brilliant. I mean, if we've been, in terms of taking leadership, we have absolutely taken leadership around air quality and, um, have actually inspired communities up and down Hudson Valley, all the way down to Newbury. The other thing is that when it comes to wildfires, um, both the California and Canada ones, but also the ones that have been happening closer and closer to us, um, we can learn a lot from what has happened already, um, and, and be able to kind of take best practices and not so great practices and apply them to our communities. That's all we have, because this is, it's all new to all of us. Um, but the, the thing that is really important, and the reason why I'm talking about both air quality and fire is because the air quality impacts and the loss of life in buildings, both are devastating about fire. That's the, that's the legacy of fire. The other thing that I wanted, the other point I wanted to make, and, and, and we're seeing some of that here in the discussions that you all are having all the time, which is that there isn't, we can't just rely on one person anymore. We can't just rely, for instance, on the mayor of Kingston to be making really tough decisions about climate change. We have to actually be there and figure out how to have a community voice in that. And as a community, we have to be engaged, right? So, um, I think, uh, it's really, for me, it's important that we, we're, we're in this forum talking about this because this would be the appropriate place to be able to figure out as a community, how can we protect ourselves? And so when it comes down to fire, the only way to avoid Kingston burning down again, um, and fire in general is to reduce the number of possibilities of a fire happening. There is no way to, to completely control it. Um, but you can have a fighting chance if you are smart about reducing the possibilities of that. Um, and when, and particularly when conditions are fire prone, people just need to know. There needs to be education. I feel like, you know, eleven years ago, if someone had told me I was gonna have a fire in my backyard, for instance, try it. Um, that, you know, if I really understood the science background, well, I'm a scientist. If somebody had told me these things, I would, I would be in a better place. So like, I could have been in a better place then, but we need, we need a way to be able to send a message to people, say, hey, this is not the time to be doing whatever it is that you're doing that's about fire and all the, all sorts of things that are fire. But you have a wood-framed city here, and, um, climate has changed, and so we need to take care. Okay, so why am I talking to you? I, I work for the Center for Environmental Sciences and Humanities at Bard, which is a, um, it's a, just a fancy way of saying, we're trying to figure out how do we build bridges between the resources that academic institutions have around here and the people who actually need those resources to be able to make a decision. So, um, I'm excited to be here on, on many levels, but it's really, for me, this is the whole point. This is why I became a professor, is to be able to actually take what I have and give it to you all so that you can make the decisions. Um, we call, have you all heard the term wicked when it comes to environmental problems before?
I have not.
Okay. All right. So we call them wicked environmental problems because there's no, there's no perfect answer and that you, you have to actually be confronting the concerns and the needs of the community as you're making your decisions. Um, it makes it big. So for instance, um, uh, I'll show you in a minute, during COVID, when COVID, uh, when we were all shut down and didn't go to work every day and then didn't have to drop our kids off at high school every day, the air quality was so amazing. But that wasn't a good way to live. They go, oh, breathe, that's enough. So we have to be able to go to work. We have to be able to drive. We also have air quality that's affected by those decisions that we make. Wicked. It's hard, and it's not, there's not a one size fits, fits all. So what we try to do, um, again, the, um, at the center is combine air quality data, and we bring our sensors like that on the roof of the Annie Murphy Building. We, we use that to get data. We combine that with, um, providing the information, the data to communities publicly. So we've put, um, we have now the Hudson Valley Community Air Network, um, which is a partnership between Bard Community Science Lab, Just Air, Hudson Valley Air Quality Coalition, um, and we put together a naming report on air quality for Kingston. This is, these are the kinds of things that make it so that it's actionable. So, okay, in terms of like what you were saying about memorializing, it's like, it is about actionable. We're talking about it. It's one thing to like just have data. Like, we have data, but we're, we're trying to work with communities to make them actionable. So what actions can we take? What concrete things can we do to improve your community and your air? Um, the, it's common knowledge across, uh, the United States that there are over fifty million people that do not have any clue about their air quality. It's not because they don't want to know. It's because they think when they look on their, um, their phones, that they're actually looking at air quality that was, um, actually taken where they are. Um, the air quality information that's reported on our phones is often miles and miles and miles away. Sometimes it'll be in the oven. Sometimes we're getting reports from Brooklyn that are then being used to predict what's here. So what we, what Kingston, Kingston basically did was say, no, we need to know what is actually here. And so this is an amazing thing. We should all be very proud of this. Um, we really stepped up and it's, it's inspired all the Hudson Valley. And the reason that that air quality is something really important to study and related to fire and, and important to understand is that air quality, uh, I mean, air and not water, even though most of us know so much about water. We don't know that much about air. It's weird because air is a fluid. It's just less dense. But it's the thing that we engage with most. Think about it. Are you breathing right now?
Hopefully.
No one's drinking water, but we're breathing, right? So, um, it's, it's weird that we don't know more. That's why we need to monitor it. But over eight point one million people die, um, from air pollution each year, and they are unnecessary deaths. Um, they are, um, premature deaths, and they, you know, air pollution is then seen as the most common cause of death. Ducking only the heart disease. And the issue is that a lot of the heart disease is specifically because of that air quality. So this number is constantly up for debate, and that can be changed. Um, so that's why we created the Hudson Valley Community Air Network. And the Community Air Network is based on these four regional air quality sensors that we found in Pratt, including the one in Kingston, one at Bard, one now in Adrian's Memorial Library in KFC, and one in Newark, in Mount St. Mary College. So that, that comprises our, um, network. Um, we have, um, thirty-something on the ground sensors that, uh, are at libraries across the Hudson Valley, and we have some sensors on the ground here in Kingston. Um, and we also have sensors that measure ozone, carbon dioxide, things like that. Um, so the big deal about this is that it's, um, public so that public can have access to the data. Um, you all can sign up, and then the cool thing is that basically you can say, this is the sensor I want information from, and, um, it will text you when the air is bad. So it makes it actionable, right? This is how you take data and you make it actionable. Um, so this exists, right? And so, um, we've been, um, measuring the air quality for five years now, um, from the Annie Murphy Building. And, you know, here is where, remember what I said about the COVID? That's COVID right there. So, uh, if this is, this is air pollution, basically the thing that we measure to, to tell if our air quality is good or bad. These are, um, Fourth of July. Um, and, uh, you can tell that, you know, there's variation in our air quality, right? Um, and we have, we absolutely as a, a city have control over our air quality because I'm, I'm not saying we shouldn't have Fourth of July, but look at that. We can tell every time we have Fourth of July, there is going to be air pollution.
Yep.
Right? So we can affect it. That means we're powerful in this. A part of this, um, over time is that these yellow shaded parts are where we have wildfires, okay? And so these were wildfire smoke, Canada, um, I mean, California, Canada, but then here is where we had some holster, um, and more, yes. So, so that's, so you'd be like, well, why aren't we talking about air pollution? We're supposed to be talking about fire. And the reason I, reason I'm talking about this is because when we have California and, um, Canadian smoke, uh, wildfire smoke, um, it really ignited, uh, um, community and student interest in understanding more about air quality and what we had control over here locally and what we didn't. And, and, and how do we, how do we deal with that? One of those students, um, got really excited about thinking about prescribed burning. I don't know if you all have heard of prescribed burning, but it's when you go in and you burn the undergrowth in a forest to proactively get ready for a wildfire, so that you don't have as much risk. Um, so she got really interested in looking at this. She kind of went down a, a rabbit hole, and then, and then just at that time, there was a burn ban that was announced by New York State. And the students themselves, um, they, they were like, this is kind of vague. Does anyone really know, like, based on what the state has said, like, does anyone know what you're actually supposed to do? Um, and then we had a conversation about that. It was noticed that Kingston, even though there were other municipalities declaring at that time, um, that this is a, this is a high-risk situation, and we need to, as a community, take, take action. Kingston did not. And so the students, and this one specific student wanted to know why. Why would the surrounding municipalities do it but not the city of Kingston? So, um, and these are slides taken from my student, um, just, she put together this survey, um, and it asked the following questions, and she, um, sent this to every municipal leader, um, in the local county. Um, the, the questions were, what factors played into your decision to implement a burn ban or not? Uh, why did you feel that was necessary? Did the state pressure you? Um, have you enacted either preventative or remedial burn bans in the past? What's your history in doing that? Do you feel that your decision was well received? And in the future, is there anything you would do differently? And here are just a couple of the responses that she got. Um, you know, there's, there's nothing scientific about this. This is literally, uh, an interested student asking the elected leaders questions. But their responses were very interesting, I think. In Hurley, they said the state should have declared a burn ban sooner because now surrounding towns, but some surrounding towns have not instituted burn bans. Woodstock said, uh, that the dry conditions, uh, were getting worse. Um, they did not receive pressure from the state or constituencies, but they did have conversation with the fire chief and the county emergency management, and then they decided to institute the ban. Um, in Lloyd, they said they just talked about the drought conditions and fires were, you know, hearing about those were key factors. They felt it was necessary. Um, they did not, uh, get pressure on it, but they did get positive feedback from residents. And in, um, and in Hardenburg, you have a lot of hikers and homeowners that may not be as aware about, you know, the risks. And so this was why they declared their ban. Um, Kingston is different. Kingston, you know, we are, we're different. We're, we're a city. We're, we're, uh, you know, we're in a, a different situation. But the, the fact is that, um, you know, we've had elevated fire risk conditions now for four times in the past year alone. And, um, it seems like we're, we need this extra push to, um, actually enact common sense legislation to declare and, and to really consistently declare burn bans in a very clear and understandable way for the community. Now, whether or not the community is gonna listen is a whole other thing. But I do think that it is very important to at least be stating these things. So, um, instead of taking a wait-and-see approach, it seems like as a community, we could take action to reduce that fire risk, right? So we're reducing the possibilities of having that fire, um, overall for Kingston. So there were suggested, uh, conditions that have come from the community, which I absolutely support. The first one would be, you know, if, if the condition that would trigger this is when the fire risk is less than needed as high, um, where Kingston is. So it's high or above as designated by the, um, the D E C Fire Danger Map. Have folks seen the Fire Danger Map before?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, so it's really, um, it's really straightforward. There it is right now. That's, that's real time right now. So right now we've got moderate fire danger where we are, and then we have, um, uh, high danger in the Adirondacks, where I'm about to go, so I'm probably not gonna. I don't even know how to put my food up there as we went, but, um, so.
So we got.
Yeah. You canoe and camp and you come back out and you go to the.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Most high.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Um, but, you know, jokes aside, this is a very straightforward. And so like, you go here, you see it's high. Okay, now we have to tell people, okay, it's time to be careful, and here's what we're gonna do, right?
Okay.
Then the, um, the last thing, you know, so the, the suggested action would be that the city puts a temporary burn ban just about those times while it's in under high. Um, and it prohibits, prohibits all outdoor burning, including bonfires, campfires, wildfires, outdoor fireplaces, chimneys, and cooking fires in city limits until further notice. So it would, um, this, this action is very discreet, and it's about high, high, um, risk, okay? And it's very clear. It will take education as community to really understand what the burn ban means, that that's our job, right? As a community, to teach each other, uh, but we first have to tell folks that's what we need, right? Um, and, um, thank you very much. I'm sorry if I took too much time, um, for that presentation.
So.
Have any questions?
Yeah, I'm sure there's.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please.
Uh, President Shaw.
So I've been watching it all of Lorraine's hard work and persistence since two thousand eighteen. And when I joined the council, I was C I C liaison, um, and support this because I do recognize that you said, like, you just, you know, I made choices to make sure that my target footprint is smaller and sometimes there are things I have to give up, but I don't necessarily want to give up, but I do. Um, and I think it's important for everybody to take those steps. Everybody takes those little steps really better. My issue, and Lorraine and I have talked about this years ago, is the education that you mentioned. Um, because people don't know what you know. I mean, you didn't even know as scientists this seven years ago from your own admission.
No, it's a process, absolutely.
Right. So my concern is I want people to understand this and be supportive of this before we're just, like, throwing this on them. And so I don't know as a professor, as somebody who lives in Kingston, how, and you've, and you've clearly thought about this and how you could make that happen. I'm not saying like that has to happen and everybody has to be on board before I support this. It may be a day run parallel, but I think that that is going to be important. Otherwise, members of this council are gonna get phone calls saying that they don't wanna get rid of their backyard campfires because they don't understand the consequences to it, so.
Absolutely. So one of the things that I would never support is something that's punitive. Um, I don't think that's helpful for the community at all. I think that is not what I'm suggesting here. What I am suggesting is that, um, we make statements at all that are of guidance because I think that is the role of the, of the city to provide. And then whether or not folks wanna follow that guidance is a whole other question, and that is a community, that's a community response that needs to happen. But for me, I wouldn't want it to be punitive, but I do think right now, we're just not communicating at all. And I do not think that is, that's not smart.
Particularly in the climate that we're in. You don't think even just saying, like, people will feel that it's punitive just by saying you can't have that fire in your backyard?
Well, we already have those ordinances, and they are not followed. I mean, I'm one of those people, please don't tell. I did that, exactly. So, so, I mean, we already have. So we, we have ordinances that are already not enforced. Um, so I, you know, so I think probably, like, Um, so I, you know, so I think probably like the, I think, uh, there's a, there's a, there's a difference between, um, there's a difference between trying to make sure that people are not upset and trying to make sure that people are safe. And then they can be upset, but they're safe. And, um, and our, you know, our city is, uh, like, I mean, our city's at this, there's no question.
I agree. I'm just saying, I, you know, we will get those phone calls and I want us to be prepared. And then also I think it's important that people understands. Cause if they understand, they're going to be willing to follow this more.
Yes.
And so that's what I'm, uh, that's what I'm asking is like, do you have any ideas on how to reach out to the community?
Yes.
And, and educate people, not saying that that has to happen and this can't happen.
Right. Yeah. No, I think you would want, and I think the city could take an active role in sponsoring, um, education around air quality. And the city already has. We've already been out there. Um, we're doing the Kingston Air Quality Initiative, which is a partnership between the city and bar. Um, and that's how we put together that, uh, the report, the annual report. So we've started doing that, that education, and I think the city could actually sponsor more of that. I think, um, one of the, um, one of the things that I would want to avoid is making this into giving something up because of climate change. I don't think, like, I think it needs to be that we are, the approach should be, we want our community to be as safe and healthy as possible. And it turns out one of the things that many of us love doesn't actually fit those things now because of climate change. So now we gotta change our minds, but what we're doing is not, it's not a punitive thing, I guess. But the education that we could do is endless. Uh, we just need to do that, right? We need to take the time, put the funding into that kind of education, have forums, community forums, have people come and be upset. I was upset when I considered that my making s'mores in my backyard was not actually good. Was upset.
So when you talk about outdoor cooking, that include barbecue goes?
Um, that I, you know, I'm not actually clear on that. I think, right?
Said you all some comparables from different communities and, um, many of them outlawed all outdoor burning, all cooking fires, period. Um, and a couple said it was okay to use a gas grill that was contained. Um, but if you're talking about fire danger, um, it probably would make sense to have no outdoor cooking if we're in high fire danger. One of the things I wanted to say was regarding your questions is about people some not being informed at this point, um, is that almost every other municipality recognized this was a huge risk and implemented burn bans. Um, they did not wait to hear for community, about community response. They knew this was trouble. And in Kingston, we are, uh, we are at, I would hazard to say more risk than most places because we have so many similarities with the community of Altonina in California. These wood-framed houses densely sited next to each other and, um, and we have, uh, well, at that time there were similar risks and there have been four times in this year. Um, and those basic facts remain. We have similarities with that town. We're also in a valley, which they were. You see the photos now of the devastation in Altonina. It kind of looks like Kingston. It, here's the mountain background and here's this completely burned out city. And all it takes is the winds, which are now part of what they could use to determine fire risk. Um, and it doesn't take much. And during those times of high fire risk, we get warnings from the national, so far, but, you know, who knows? But National Atmospheric and Atmospheric Sciences. Um, people saying, uh, that any spark should be avoided. That it's so, it's just such a risk. Um, so I, I hear you about the education piece. I think, um, I think that these facts should be sufficient for people to be educated that other municipalities have already done this when there is high fire risk, um, within Ulster County. And that, um, and that we as a city have this unique, the only city in Ulster County have this unique, uh, these unique characteristics that make us more prone, uh, because urban wildfires are much more difficult to put out as you terribly saw LA. Much more difficult to put out than fires in the wilds. So those are all facts, I think, um, I think are pretty compelling to most people who live here, who live in a place and want to keep safe.
Yeah. So, so what are you proposing that we would initiate? It would be a burn ban on a temporary basis every time there is a high fire risk that's been declared?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Which then removes the political pressure on someone like the mayor, like anyone who's in that position is gonna feel this political pressure around whether or not people are gonna be mad at them because they can't have their s'mores that night. So I, I get it, right? And I would be one of those mad people. Like, I'm, I'm not, like, I'm not trying to pretend here. So, but so we need to remove that political piece around this and our own personal, um, connections to fire and actually think about the safety of the city. So one thing that I would, um, one thing that I would, um, suggest though, this idea about education is really important. And also the conversation around the, um, moralizing piece earlier is that what if we, what if we partnered something like this with an education, something? So that we are clear that the, the fact that it has happened because of safety of the city, that's our job to protect the city, um, to have due diligence around risk. Um, and, and we recognize that there, there's, I don't know what it would be, but some sort of education piece that has a, like, that's, I'm, that might be, that might be something that would be helpful.
I, yeah, I mean, I think.
Action.
Yeah, I think people are going to, like, it's one thing to create a lot, and I guess it's, I hope I'm not like sounding like I'm against this because I'm absolutely not. I just worry that if people don't understand the reasoning behind it, they're not going to follow it. And if we already have things that aren't.
We already don't, so that is.
So we want people, if we're gonna do this, we want people to follow, to choose to follow this.
Yeah.
And without the education, I don't see that that's happening. So that is my concern. It's not that I, you know, the political thing, it's not, that is my concern.
Yeah, let me sense.
So I would be, I, you know, if you want to see the volunteers to do the education throughout the city.
I mean, we've been doing it, but we've been trying. We need more of them.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
But yeah, I, I would definitely support something like that, but I think people need to understand. And I do think that people, you know, yes, the safety of Kingston, but also in our people, but also I think people will respond to the issues of climate change.
Right.
I, but yeah.
Well, my question is, where's the fire chief say? Yeah.
I'm sorry, could you?
Where's the fire chief say?
Oh.
I have no idea. Do you know?
I don't know.
Yeah, I.
You wouldn't know more than I do. I mean, uh.
I just read forward it what we had sent about, you know, like their, our chapter one thirty-five, air pollution and smoke control. They just resent it. Um, so I think my idea was just to have him come in, you know, and then another time to.
Yeah.
Procession him, flush it all out. And I, I know just for myself that with the wildfires happening, I think I don't have like an air tight home, right?
Yeah.
It's not even about heat.
Yeah.
Or, um, this is the first time I ever smelled smoke in my house.
Yeah.
Right? And I have my windows closed. I have an old home. We have a lot of old homes in Kingston.
Yeah.
So I'm sure I'm not the only one.
Yeah.
So, and people, I just remember people buying air purifiers for their homes. Yeah. So I, I think it's, um, maybe people that didn't believe in things or didn't find it consequential.
Who are being inspired that are hoping, you know?
Yeah.
So the question is, are we gonna be one of those communities that are always trying?
Well, I have another question. And that's, I went online and started looking at different burn bans that different communities have. And as you had said, they're all different.
Yeah.
So, you know, some of them are more specific, some of them are more general. I went into the impulse one and they're very specific about what kinds of things can and can't be burned. And so in your, you know, what would you recommend in terms of what you've seen, you know, in other places? Are there examples that you could send to us of, I know you already sent some around, but maybe some, maybe some of the best practices in your experience of what kind of like, do we, do we want to be specific? You probably have to because otherwise people are, that's the problem we often have with a number of our, with our, with our code violations is, well, this doesn't tell me what it is.
Right.
You know, it's like, don't burn outdoors. Well, what is that? Campfires, grills, what, you know, so do you have examples? Yeah. Cigarettes. There was a. So do you have, like, what would be your best practice example of what's been implemented in a community that people have been excited about and followed and?
Oh, that now I'm saying that part.
But people, they forget to follow that. People have been, people have welcomed, let's say, whether they followed it or not.
Yeah.
Um, and that, right, and that the fire, you know, and that the city itself knew what it was enforcing in a temporary burn ban.
Mm-hmm.
And how so, how, you know, how they set up a system for how you call off the burn ban? When it's, you know, just what is the, what are we looking at in terms of a presentation to the community?
Yeah. That's not my area of expertise, um, but it's certainly something, you know, you might know something about.
I do know.
I figured you knew about this.
Yes. And that had to do with November of last year, when these communities, all the communities in Ulster County stepped up because the governor's burn ban was completely ineffective.
Right.
And the county also punted and left it up to every municipality and they all jumped right in because they knew it was real danger there. And so, um, as far as the specifics go, I'll say that there was a template that, um, that, uh, a lot of them used. Um, but that many of the communities went further than that template even. Um, and I could say that I think that the model ones, um, would be this one, which comes mainly from Marble Town.
So the statement, all outdoor burning, including bonfires, campfires.
Oh, yeah, right. I see. Okay.
Um, because it leaves no question as to what's allowed or isn't.
Right.
And also those same communities made clear how they were going to enforce it, which had to do. Uh, many of them put it right to the fire department. Others put it to building safety. Um, and others said the fire department will be called and law enforcement would be brought in if needed to make sure people follow the ban because it was a temporary, uh, high fire risk time.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what I know about it.
Okay, well, that's helpful.
Both, almost every community in Ulster County did that.
I mean, I don't see us being able to do it exactly that way. Like, you know, our building department is not on call at night and waiting.
Right.
So, um.
One, one, one question. Um, you know, I was thinking about what Andrew was saying and this idea of, uh, educating people. And maybe in an ideal world, we had a mayor who could use his office as a bully point and let people know what the risk is only during these high, uh, risk times. It's an easy way to let people know why we're doing this or why there's law. But it doesn't seem to be happening that way. So we have to find some way that people would understand from a leadership perspective, you know, that's, that's what it's like. It's almost like you're, you're being asked to do his job, basically, which is to let people know when there's, the community is at risk. So now we have to come up with, you know, some other way of informing people. It'd be nice if somebody from the, uh, the government itself would say, look, this is what's happening and it's only during the high-risk times that we have to enforce this because we don't want the city to burn after somebody accidentally starts a fire.
Uh, it is true that all of those, um, burn bans, temporary burn bans at that time were brought by the executives of those communities. Um, and that Kingston did not. And as the director of the ZD Air Quality Coalition, I, we wrote a letter and requested to know what his process was as, as I think you've seen, and also a follow-up letter because it was the second time that there was high fire risk. And so, um, you know, that, that was the, that was the course of events in the other communities. Um, that it was the.
They went through the executive.
Yeah, whoever the town supervisor was or.
So I, I just have a quick question. Since you've sent those surveys out, did one go to Kingston?
Yeah, uh, hmm, yes, I think so.
Did you get a response?
So I don't know. They, they already get one.
Kingston responded that there, um, there was a burn ban in place all year long, twenty-four, seven, which basically isn't true. What there is is a man from the state that says that cities, uh, with populations of, um, uh, more than twenty thousand people are not permitted to do outdoor burning of brush year round. That's the only burn ban. There is no, nothing like this on the books.
Just two questions, I guess. Would you be willing to share this presentation with the rest of the council? Because then I, you know.
Question.
Yeah, start the education process?
Yes.
And then can we invite the chief for next one? The next month so that we can have a plan, but then I guess three questions I sent to. The specific ask is that, hold on, suggestion. Okay. So that's what we should all have on our minds.
Yeah. So the condition is when it's, uh, recorded this time, right now it's not high. When it is high, that, that, that save that burn ban. And that's during those time.
I just wanted to clarify because the last three months it has been, we haven't been, um, it, we haven't known for sure what this council is being at. So that's very helpful.
Yeah, this is very helpful.
And you're saying that Marble Town has a good template that we could use? We could use Marble Town.
That was in that, I wanted to make sure.
Or maybe you could resend. I don't know if you sent it to all the council members.
I did.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I, I have it. I just pulled it up again.
Oh, that would be great.
I, I sent one. We also have that the fire sheet had, our, um, I had a.
So you're absolutely clear. So you're talking about a burn ban in November, March, September, about a year.
For whatever.
No, I'm just saying in the past year or so, it's been those three periods.
Yeah, two days.
Two days. So it is not a, you know, and I don't think people have a clear understanding. It's not an empty burn ban forever. It's a burn ban for specific days that are identified as high risk.
Yes, high fire.
Just when that, when that map is red on us, that's gonna be.
But when, I know like every spring though, there is a burn ban, like up until May fifteenth, right? And that is considered a red on the map or?
No, it's like, it's considered a precaution.
Okay. Okay.
And that's.
See, it's so confusing.
That's what they spray. The only governors brush burning in communities. No one, so all the communities who have fewer than twenty thousand residents are allowed to burn brush outdoors all year long, except for March through May. Kingston is not, never allowed to do that, burn brush outdoors because it has more than twenty thousand residents. So that's, that's what that burn ban is, quote unquote. But last March, this past March, uh, the governor, um, spoke up again, I think it was over fires in Long Island, in Brooklyn, popping up, um, because of a high fire risk. And she instituted a burn ban, which in her language means no brush burning. But it was earlier than that, than that usual period, um, from, uh, March fifteenth or so to May fifteenth. It was early March this year. Um, and now I, I just, of course, I have a lot of anxiety because we're coming right back into November, October time, when the fires and already the D E C is worrying that the fire risk is going up. You can see that, um, in the state. So it's concerning.
Yeah.
Follow, we have a number of days of burn ban in this period.
Oh, no. Yeah. Or, or how many days we ran high?
How many days?
How many days?
Five. How many days will we?
Tell me.
That's a very good question.
You know, I mean, if it's, if it's ten days, it's a different story than if it's three months.
Yes.
You know?
I don't know.
You know, that would be.
It's a really good question.
So, does it keep, is there an archive?
There might be. That's something that my students, we could get right on.
I'm gonna sign.
Once a year. Yeah. It's not, it'll be something that we can work on together. Um, it's a very good question. The one sad thing I can't tell you though is that whatever number it is, only a hit.
Right.
Yeah, the worst time. So it'll be kind of our starting baseline.
Mm-hmm. There was one day. There was one day this month, just one day, um, when the N O A A sent out this high fire this morning, the winds were high. And it had very, like, absolutely dry conditions, so that was just one day, but then that would be the time.
Well, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
And you'll send.
I'll, and I'll, I'll get back to you and so I'll send you the.
If you can, I'll share with the rest of the council, so they know.
Any other questions, please?
Thank you, you know. You, you have to see this, um, what was it, like, two, three years ago, you went across the country with a.
Oh, fun, your teardrop.
I said, what?
A wild little teardrop trailer.
I wanted to find it.
Yeah, I call you horrible in Texas.
Really? He was.
You're surprised. I don't know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, he built it by hand.
Very impressive.
Alright, so. We are going to move on, uh, now to, um, Forty-Ninth Park Street, which was sent back, uh, to the committee from the council board, um, a week ago.
Yeah, so there were outstanding questions for our attorneys, so we're gonna go as an attorney playing a session first and then have you tell men who can have a discussion.
Thank you.
There was a session.
Thank you for your patience.
Nobody's still, I'm stretching my legs, so.
Let them know what we're doing. Andrea, can you let them know what we're doing? Can you let them know what we're doing?
Oh, we want to make a hug.
Yeah.
Uh-oh, no.
Are you a university professor?
Uh, a teacher.
Yeah, I'm saying.
You're both college professors, yes?
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, we're signed.
Takes on to no one. Well, okay, I'm getting it now.
Yes, at the bottom, feet.
You know, I'm the city, city, they should know that. He is.
Do.
Um, wasn't the preservation.
Done then.
The member community need to make the funding.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
Is that a good thing?
I think.
He seems it, he seems it.
Who's that?
Yeah, alright. So, um, as stated, this got, uh, sent back to committee on the floor after being passed out of laws and rules on August twentieth, twenty-five. Uh, but we're going to move ahead, um, not change anything, but we have to retake a vote again, um, procedurally. So it's, it's basically the same resolution.
Or it is the same.
It is, yeah, just rewriting it with today's date. Um, so it's a, uh, I'm just gonna read it, a resolution of the common council to remove all re, uh, all restrictions from the deed between the city of Kingston and Forty-Ninth Streets. You got a motion?
Motion. We're saying.
You, you are the second. Bernie.
Bernie is.
Alright, um, any discussion?
No.
Anything popper vote? All in favor?
Hi.
Anything, anyone opposed? That would kind of grapes. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, babe. The night to the line, you know.
I hope you learned, you learned the. Thank you guys very much.
You can give them, give them up here.
Anything more? Yes, I know.
Don't steal what you knew. Even though what you don't know.
Then we, we got a lot of.
But we have.
We took a vote. We took a vote.
Yes.
Yes, was we. Well, now you just did.
Alright, did that, Matt, that made it, like, square on the table?
Because, okay.
I'd just like to get it back before I move on. Yes, sorry. Good night, Matt. Always appreciate you.
We'll store sign.
Okay, I just wanted to come back and.
Oh.
I'm sorry, fully.
This has been a high noon meeting.
Hey, what?
High noon meetings.
Oh, wow. It's nice, nice. There was a meeting.
Very much.
All right, so, all right, what do you want to do? Uh,
Project Maple.
Project Maple.
I'm going to read out this.
What?
So. Yeah, so this is a resolution about some more. Expanded, um, pipelines for frac gas, uh, from food and water watch reached out. They were supposed to be here tonight. Uh, they were unable to present on it. Um, I will say, just to follow up on the memorializing resolution discussion, um, a week ago, I was up in Syracuse, New York for, um, a local progress convening. And we had the opportunity to have lunch with Senator Rachel May, who is, um, who said that, uh, our county executive was her best friend. They worked on a lot of, you know, climate legislation, did all this really good work. And she said, I asked her, do you read these? And she said, yes, when we go to vote and deliberate, every letter, every moralizing resolution that gets sent into us is attached to their fact. Yeah. So she said it does make a difference on, at the state level. So I just wanted to put that out there.
No, that's good, it's good for everybody to know who you're.
Yeah.
For us and for the public.
Yes, so, all right. So this is, um, a resolution that I also then sent to the CAC. Um, because, you know, they also do so much work. And so Emily Hauser and the CAC committee reviewed this and, and made changes. And Kevin McIlroy sent it back to me.
Okay.
So it is very Kingston specific. Um, and so it's just, uh, you know, we say Kingston has a principal responsibility to protect the health and safety of its residents, businesses, and institutions. All citizens have the right to clean air, clean water, and a liberal climate. Um, Enbridge is seeking to expand compressor station capacity, replace pipe, and significantly increase the flow of fracked gas up by up to five hundred thousand decathermes per day, um, along the Agonquin Pipeline Route, which runs underneath the Hudson River and within fifteen hundred feet of the decommissioned Indian Point Nuclear Plant. Uh, whereas the Agonquin Pipeline Expansion dubbed Project Maple will interfere with and negatively impact the Hudson Valley ecosystem and economy that relies on the tourism and health of those waters. The Hudson River is an important asset to Kingston, whereas contamination from pipelines leaking can disrupt drinking water sources and exposure to air pollutants admitted from natural gas infrastructure facilities in, is linked to neurological, cardiovascular, and respiratory disease, cancer, birth defects, and other adverse health impacts. And whereas increasing air pollution from expanding natural gas facilities violates residents' right to clean and healthy environment under the Green Amendment, Article One, Section nineteen of the New York State Constitution. Kingston is considered a disadvantaged community under New York State's Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. Uh, the build out of new fossil fuel pipelines, like the William Constitution and NESE Pipeline, and expansion of existing lines, including the Elgonquin Project Maple, will create additional air pollution that will exacerbate and increase public health problems like asthma and COPD cases in the region, especially in disadvantaged communities. Whereas Governor Hoel in the New York State is being pressured to approve long-denied fracked gas pipelines, including Constitution and Northeast Supply Enhancement Project, NSE. And whereas Kingston is concerned with maintaining affordable energy for its residents, academic research broadly concludes that an electricity system that is based on one hundred percent renewable energy and storage is not only feasible, but would be comparable or cheaper for consumers than the current electricity grid. And where out the burning, the building of the existing Elgonquin Line and compressor stations, or the build out of the new infrastructure, like the Constitution and NESE Pipeline, would lead to higher costs for ratepayers who are already facing gas-fired rate hikes and higher health costs. Um, so I'm just gonna get to the.
So.
Yeah, so the resolved city of Kingston, in the intent of protecting its residents from water and air pollution, urges Governor Kathy Hochul to oppose the Elgonquin Pipeline Expansion, dubbed Project Maple, the Constitution Pipeline, the NSE Pipeline, and any other fossil fuel expansion, and be further resolved that Governor Kathy Hochul, Director Agencies, to deny permits for the expansion of these pipelines, thereby upholding New York CLPA and state's environmental standards and commitment for a sustainable future.
You said, um, one thing about the, uh, at the use of categorizing Kathy Hochul's having been pressured. Why, why is that necessary to say?
Because I know it's true.
And how do you?
That's the question. Yeah, because it's what people do.
There are some typos in this, too.
I, I would just have a problem with.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to have them come and speak to us.
Okay.
All right, yeah.
And also, um, because it was brought up in the last one, the, the last resolve has a ton of electric circles that are not going to the officials. And again, I just think it's more powerful.
Yeah.
What it is, it's just. So we could do that.
Yeah.
Although I, I could see the benefit of having the Senate Majority Leader.
Yeah, those, I, I agree.
Um, because she's the leader.
Right.
Okay.
Right. You good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. We're gonna table that. I'm inviting that back, yeah. And so now we're just going to end our evening with our trucks and zoning.
So, are we basically deciding whether we want to do weight or length?
I was saying, I was thinking both. Why can we do one and the other?
Yeah.
It has to be weight or one. Can't do both.
The, I think it has to be length, because how do you measure the weight?
From front, you measure it on one of those weigh stations.
But I think there, there's different classes, and you come a different class.
Right, he also says it on the side.
Yeah. The registration is, has a classification.
Oh, do we have a recommendation of a Chinese fast? I think I would go with links because you gotta find every truck.
And, and in fact, I went, I went online and I found some nice pictures of, of trucks. And it looks like if you go by length, the ones that are longer than twenty, what is it, ten, twenty feet? Twenty-five feet, weigh like twenty thousand, forty thousand pounds.
That's why they're longer.
That's why they're longer, because they, and they have more weight. So it seems like length is probably, probably the best way to go.
And axles, right? Axles, places.
Axles and, and length.
Now that you're setting up.
That's right. Just private parking.
So what we asking you to do now?
Yeah.
Yeah, he said, basically said there's a contradiction with the place, in a place where it says length, and then it says weight.
And he's right about that.
Yeah, so just need to make a resolution, change the weight into the.
All right, any vehicle with a weight of ten thousand pounds unloaded, like.
Right.
Right.
Any vehicle with three or more axles, or any unit of a tractor, trailer.
And doesn't say the length in there?
Um, that's what a truck is, um, and then.
He's saying, he's saying, right, those are.
The definition, yeah.
And, and those are, they should be governed by this. You know, when you get into link, think about link, a tractor trailer cab.
Right.
Not a long, not a long.
And it also doesn't weigh that much by itself, right?
Well, it doesn't be ten thousand pounds. I don't know. Probably doesn't weigh ten thousand pounds, but it's more concentrated. Maybe the concentrated weight versus.
Fast, truly long days.
So I give you a ten thousand pound truck.
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't, that doesn't damage a bridge as much as a short truck. With less, so you get into the hole. What does it really mean? You know? And this is all on sight distance, right? Pretty much. We don't want big trucks parked on the street. That's kind of.
Right, they take up a lot of space.
It would seem to be the length.
That seems to be.
Because even if it's just a cab, that you can, I mean, that's not that big.
No, it was tall.
The cabs aren't allowed either, like technically, well, because they could be dangerous, like there's, like, kids could climb on them. There's, like, I've had this issue come up, I've had, um, the cabs, uh, parking over the weekend on West Chestnut Street.
Right.
So.
But then that, that goes different. So can be illegal as a.
Yeah.
Commercial vehicles, can you park commercial vehicles on the, on the street or not? In Kingston? Any commercial vehicle?
Well, not depending on size.
Depending on how long.
There's like vans, like.
What, recreational?
I was thinking about RVs, yeah, there are a couple of people, you know, in Wardline who have RVs that when they're about to, yeah, the night before. But I think it's only between eight P, I mean, it's about eight P M, seven A M, you can't park it. Because they, they will bring it in if they're gonna get ready to go off on a trip, they'll park it in front of their house. And people have called me, but.
Is that gonna be a length problem?
That would be the length problem.
Yeah, so that's like right now, it says, no truck shall be parked on any city street, highway, or roadway between the hours of eight P M and seven A M in any residential area. Then we're adding, no refrigerated truck or trailer shall be parked within the city between the hours of eight P M and seven A M with the refrigeration unit in operation.
That's a good one, we should have those.
We should have them.
Yeah.
We might add an exception, the exception of RVs for thirty-one night, you know, more. And, but no consecutive nights or something like that.
Then you get into. You enforce that and.
So, but.
I mean, no one's gonna be complaining, no one will complain, because the neighbors are all aware of it, it's just there overnight, and then it's gone by six in the morning.
But like, we have these cabs, right, these tractor trailer cabs parking on West Chestnut. There was a, a truck driver that was coming in on the weekends, I believe, staying at an Airbnb and parking.
Right.
So, but we, we did get them to then park in the, um, Burger King. So, like, we, we were able to find another place for it, for those nights.
And then, and then also.
Is it red? So.
Yeah.
Okay, so under chapter three seventy-six.
Bartek is recommending we look at this, he's not making a recommendation.
He's not, right. I mean, I do think it should be the length, not the weight. Because the length is so much easier to.
In excess of time. Yeah, because there's, we don't want to have more than one parking spot.
And then especially because it says ten thousand pounds unloaded, because how do you say, with, you know, because if it's ten thousand pounds, and depending on what kind of vehicle it is, and what it has in there, it could be the same size, but one weighs more, and then, you know, is that fair?
Well, ten thousand, it says ten thousand on the sun.
Yeah, I just think the length is.
Length is easier for the.
Right, it's easier, and I, I definitely don't like ten thousand pounds unloaded.
The, 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 definitely.
Oh.
Yeah, and that's the definition.
Do you have, I know, I thought that you actually have to unload it and then wait.
Oh, that's what I thought, what?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We're all getting new. I, I, I have like looked into it, and it was like the registry.
Very literal, you're gonna have to unload the truck.
Yeah.
Take a lot of time.
Yeah.
I'm embarrassed right now, but at least I'm not alone. Thank you, I still think it should be.
You don't want to use your length as.
But that's prohibited, but then the definition, the code has defined it, a truck is any vehicle with a weight of ten thousand pounds unloaded.
Right, so it would happen to shake, yeah.
How do you go into?
For purposes of truck restricted parking, all day, because this is the ordinance.
So we're not talking about trailers?
No.
No, we're talking about trucks.
So landscape guys have that giant trailer. They fill it with pickup trucks, parks in the trees, okay?
But if we're saying truck, right, truck should be defined as a, a cab.
It's a very narrow, there's, there's not a lot of trucks, per se, that I see on the streets.
Right. There's trucks.
I see trailers. Like landscape trailers.
Right.
And I see, uh, the, the. I would have issues with restricting that length restrictions, because it's somebody's business. And if they don't have a driveway, which we all know there's a lot of houses that don't have driveways, or if they do, it might not fit that. So, but, yeah, something like that, I would have issues with.
This is a really tiny social.
I know, so, but there are people that do have a, a personal business and have a little fleet. But, and are parking. And that's another person, yeah, that's, yeah.
I know, I just don't, I, I agree, I just don't want to, like, make it so restrictive, that we're also, there's consequences, people that we don't want to have.
Did we have Sweet Fairy about this?
Who we what?
Did we ask Sweet Fairy about this?
Oh, yeah, right.
That would be a good idea.
That would be very useful.
Unity average.
I don't know.
But he knows a lot. Oh, I thought he meant like actually even the fairy telling.
No, he knows a lot, he knows, knows a lot about parking, and where people park.
Yeah.
I would think it'd be a resource that we could use.
I think you're right. I think he'd be thrilled, because I think so, too.
He doesn't get to come visit us. Yeah, yeah.
I don't think this is, this is advergent at this point, you know? I don't think so.
It's been riding.
But it's been riding, speaking of trucks, yes, it's my life. But you're right, every, every, no matter, no matter which way we go, we're gonna be affected, be somebody.
Let's see what he says.
Let's, yeah.
Confirm it then.
Because I'm sure he's not involved about all the things.
He has an opinion.
I'm sure he has.
And he has more expertise than anybody.
And I have no expertise. Just opinions, and that's useless, right?
I thought you were ready to unload the truck and you're trying to.
They have to work on the trucks, they're busy tonight.
So, uh, still we go to break tables, and, and invite, and, and.
You can do that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna enjoy that.
Yeah.
Okay.
He, you know, he's had many other decisions.
He's, he's taking my car regularly when I'm working.
And why were you parking in a place where a ticket shop?
He was on the road, and he was like two seconds late, I mean, he's ninja.
He is, yeah, no, you're right.
Okay. Yeah, stop it up.
Are we done?
And then we're going to, um, also table this signage standards, uh, we need to have like a sit-down.
Yeah, we all know, get together, and try and to understand.
And. Yeah. And then, not on agenda is, um, you know, the, the ongoing vacancy study. We sent the questions in to Bartek. Uh, he sent responses, some of that will also need to, um,
Should be thought.
I, not thought about, but also we have to go ask questions of other people, like if there was some stuff on there.
That's right. Um, is it time to set dates? So, I, that's, I've had a question from some people, you know, from candidates, who just say, what is the date for?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I'll, I'll reach out to Bartek and see. So we have the questions that people send in, we're gonna put them together, and then we're gonna ask Bartek, because we don't have the ability to do much to get them to the appropriate people. So I'm gonna see when he, if he could, if he's willing to do that, and then his timeline for that. Oh, I see, yeah, that makes. But I'll, I'll do, and I have another question, too, just because I talked to, I was talking to some of my candidate constituents today.
Got a lovely meeting with four tenants.
What you did?
I love it, yes. We're talking.
What made it lovely?
We're talking, that was very pleasant.
Oh, okay.
It's a nice payout.
We have another question, no, no, that was, no, that was just. Having a backup someone over here.
Talking, wait, sir.
All right. So I believe that concludes the business of the laws and rules.
Would you like a motion to?
I would like a moralizing resolution.
Oh, I should.
Be resolved.
It's eight thirty-six P M, uh, emotion, my god, and second, okay, my therapist. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, good night.